Sweet meal for me.
Counselwoman Jackson. Would you be so kind to distort a blessing?
Dear the Father, we just thank you now, Lord God, because you're good and you're great and you're greater to be praised. Lord God, we thank you that you're marvelous and that you're worthy of blessed, that you're excellent in all your ways. And we concur with that part. We thank you for your kindness and your grace and your mercy that you've extended upon us to allow us to be here today in the land of the living and serving in your community. Father God, we ask that you be with us and work through us to accomplish your will and yours alone. We cast down every thought, every imagination, every hiding that exhausts itself against the knowledge of who you are, Lord God, and we bring all those things into captivity for your will and yours alone. Lord God, we ask for protection and safety and safe travels for those that are coming to the meeting, Lord God, and those that are not able to be here. Lord God, we just ask that you will allow your work to be done through your leaders in your community. In Jesus' precious, holy and righteous name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counselwoman Jackson. No solicitors request. Attorney Graham over.
Maybe on his way.
Attorney Wood, okay. Yeah, they did.
They're on their way.
In the meantime, I want to ask Stephen Morris would you come up? We're all talking about ways of saving money and collecting money. And I've been talking with Mr. Morris about the last month or so, so give him an opportunity to come and do this.
Thank you very much. I'm Stephen Morris. I've got my own company, which is a consulting company called Morris and Company. But one of the great companies that I represent is a company called Ingenuity. They're a company located in Birmingham, Alabama. They are a telecom and utility optimization company. So basically what they do is they find you money. They find you money in rates that you may be paying that are too high or telecom costs that you can look at. So I'm just going to cut it short, turn it over to Jim Doyle, who is with Ingenuity. Let him explain a little more about how the product or the service works and how we can, on a contingency basis, hopefully find some revenue for, for sale.
Thank you very much. I'm Jim Doyle with Ingenuity. And we're working to talk to you all about our utilities and telecommunications optimization services. Basically, what we do is we come in and we audit your existing bills. Look for missed applied taxes and fees. Are you on the correct rate? Where can we save you money and where can we get you refunds? Because it is contingency based, what we'd like to do is do some due diligence on the front end. Work with the city clerk's office to get a month's worth of bills. Without any agreement or contract or anything for y'all, we'll look at those bills and see what we think the opportunity is based on your actual billing. And then come back and say, yes, we can help or no one can. And the nice thing is, we're only paying a percentage of what we find and only after you save the money. So there's no projections, no estimates. It's literally if we can save you money on how you're being billed, we track that and get a percentage of that savings going forward for a given time period. So it's risk-free for you guys, and this program's worked really well. We've done this probably sixty cities and counties across the state. Telecom bills, as much as eighty percent of them have errors. So we can find those, work through the vendors, get your money back, and also streamline those going forward. What most people don't understand is, for example, Alabama Power has almost two hundred rate and rider combinations. Most people are on one of three. So sometimes we can come in, rework the way you're being billed, and save as much as twenty, thirty percent. I can't promise.
Thank you.
Can't promise out the gate that we can help. We like to do the due diligence on the front end to make sure there's an opportunity. If you're set up clean, we'll be the first ones to tell you. Just, you're good. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. If we can help, we at least have, at that point, an idea of what we can do for you. So we kind of like to work with the city clerk's office just to do that initial review.
Counselwoman, Counselwoman Jackson.
You was going so, you was going real fast. You was putting it out there. I didn't get it all right, but I got a little bit. What's the name of your company?
Ingenuity.
And you're located out of?
We're based out of Birmingham.
Out of Birmingham?
Yes, ma'am. And we've done work all over the state. We've been in business for almost twenty years. And we've done the same program even for the state of Alabama for the sixteen largest agencies. During the utility side, we've wound up saving almost forty million dollars a year for the state.
Another question I should ask. So you are... You're here to help us find money or to help us save money?
A little bit of both.
A little bit of both?
Yes, ma'am. If you find errors, billing errors or taxes fees that you shouldn't have been paying, Public Service Commission will let us go back thirty-six months to get a refund on those. And then we can also make sure you're being billed correctly going forward. And at times, we can save twenty to thirty percent on those bills going forward by restructuring or taking the bad billing rates possible.
Anything else, Counselwoman Thompson?
No, I have, if I have a question, I ask him right.
Thank you. Counselwoman Thompson.
Thank you for coming on this evening. What percentage?
We get thirty-five percent, but it's after you save it.
Yes.
And we, over the years, we transitioned to that because using projections, things like that, there always seemed to be curveballs that came up. And one of the biggest drivers was we were working with the school system. We were saving a lot of money on the individual school, and then a tornado came through. The school basically was closed down for an extended period of time. Couldn't share the savings, so doing it this way is the fairest way for both sides. What are some nearby cities that you are in, sir? We've done Birmingham, Mobile County, travel, Hoover. Basically, if you run down sixty-five, we start at Gardenville and go to Mobile. So now we're kind of working our way outwards from sixty-five.
But the mission start would be to get with the clerk and compile our bills.
Yes, just two thousand for the utilities on our end. So we don't ask for the, because the last thing we want to do on a contingency contract is work through the process, have it in place, and then we can't do anything. So this at least lets us know, yes, we can help, and gives you a ballpark of what we think we can do, how much money we think we can save, and then you can make that educated decision whether it makes sense for the city.
Counselwoman.
So just to summarize, you guys come in, audit our existing utility bills, look for cost savings, and take a percentage of that cost.
Yes, sir. And we do it on power, gas, on the telephone side, local long-distance data and wireless.
So your basic, your basic utilities?
Yes, sir. It's just one of those, everybody defines utilities a little bit different.
Okay.
Counselwoman.
Out of these cities that you've done business with, what is the most that you have saved them in one year?
I think the highest was thirty-eight percent. Thirty-eight.
And you never could have looked out.
I'll give you a great example. Birmingham Water, when we did that project, our first year was one point one million in savings. And then that earned us a lot of, I guess, credibility with the guys that ran the plants. We came and did some minor tweaks on their operation. The second year was one point four, and it stayed there going forward.
Give me something to help us. That's what you'll be looking for when you're talking about cost savings of utilities.
Sure. For Alabama Power, for example, there are almost two hundred rate and rider combinations. Most people are using one of three. So we come in and we look at how you build, how the operation is going, how that building's being used, compare it back to different rate scenarios and rider scenarios to make sure you're on the most effective rate for that individual account. We also look at it on an account basis plus a citywide basis. So in some scenarios, we'll actually make a change on one account that may cost you an extra couple hundred dollars, but it qualifies ten other accounts for additional discounts. So if we do take a loss on one account, it comes out, we're built on the net savings. So that loss comes out of the savings numbers. So it's just in our stuff, we've painstakingly made it black and white.
The city here in the past two years went to the LED lighting?
Yes, the LEDs.
If there could be some cost comparison between the LED and the old lighting, would you be able to share that with us?
That's actually turned into one of the biggest business models we have because everyone is going through that transition. And the bigger the utilities, the, sometimes the engineering department and the marketing departments don't communicate real well. So you'll be building LED lights that replace the traditional streetlights, but still being built for both. So we're definitely looking at them.
That'd be a man left in the dark.
I don't see why that you guys are asking for the city. You just come in and pro bono?
Pro bono.
So I want you to do this to see what the savings is to be available, sir?
Yes, sir. Make sure we can actually help you. If we can't, I'll be the first one to tell you. And if it's something small, what I typically do is say, here's ten things you can do to save some money. And when you speak of this, please speak well. You know, it may not be worth doing a contract, but it's one of those things, a lot of times we can find, I've never struck out, but sometimes the savings is small and it's, it just makes more sense to just put the recommendations out and let you do your own thing.
Counselwoman Thompson.
Hey, tell me where you're from.
We're based out of Birmingham. Do you have a car?
Yes, sir.
Billings on tomorrow? Is this something that counsel would like to move forward with?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hand it on the court. Go ahead, Counselwoman.
I would recommend that you, that you get what our attorney drafted contract because it do need to be done by contract.
Share the note.
Let us look at it before we move on this and let's see what we're looking at.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Give me a call tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We apologize for before we came up here. I'll touch base with her tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Attorney Graham.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselwoman, I want to ask you, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Morris. Attorney Graham.
When you two asked President there, one of the lead thought, we were a little bit.
Probably we were at the city county manager. We've been clerks, concrete, a lot of different ones, yes.
This may do for me.
Well, I was actually going to write.
Good morning. Rest yourself.
That's Larry Morrison's son.
Larry Morris.
Who is it?
Larry Morris.
Hell's down. Hell's down.
Yeah, sure. Exactly right. Now that I'm old, I don't look the same, but I know so much about this stuff.
Thank you. Attorney Graham, how you doing?
Good.
Any questions for your attorney? I have all the contracts that he has prepared for us. I'm going to put them off the second agenda for tomorrow night. I'm going to go ahead and sign them and give them to you. And I know it's going to pass, so after that, you can go ahead and get whoever you need to sign it to move forward. But I'm going to go ahead and sign everything tonight and give it to you. But it will be on the second agenda tomorrow. Any questions for?
Woodie, not Woodie.
I told Attorney Graham.
Graham. Attorney Graham. I have a question. We have a resolution, we have two types of resolution in our scene. One type is abandoned houses and the other type with overgrown, you know, property, keeping up their property. I have a problem that I've been dealing with since 2018. I have a person that owns this property. They own some more property. And another tenant that own his property next to them, he's losing his tenant because of the other property will not clean up his property. I have been working with, been trying to get this. I brought it several times before the council. So my recommendation that I talked to the lead about is that I would like for our clerk to, I want to do a resolution tomorrow to be brought. I would like to put a resolution on the floor that the tenant of this property immediately clean his property up. Give him like thirty days to clean it up. And if not in thirty days, if we have to go in there and clean up, he would have to be billed because it's unfair to the other tenant that everybody moves in. His house got to move out because of the possum, the raccoons, and everything is, is taking over in their house. The family say they wake up, hear something in the bed with the kids. Kids hollering. So I told him, the man, he called me and I said, all I can do is, I know that we can get the clerk to send him a certified letter, do a resolution, to do a certified letter for overgrown lot and have him to, allow him so many days, and if he doesn't, then it's my, we have to get it cleaned up. We have, because that tenant, he pays taxes too. And, but everybody, this is third family that's moving out. And I done been out there. I have worked with him. I have tried to clean. No, I have cleaned it up before. And I did what I could do at the line of my, what I can do. And, but it's terrible and the man is very upset. And I told him, this is the next step that I would do, and I would like to do that, do the resolution.
Well, there's already an ordinance, several, I think, that for the council to declare the property a nuisance and to have that nuisance paid, there is a notice period. I want to say it's thirty days. We'll have to double check. But the council can declare.
I would like to move that forward by the clerk tomorrow to have, I want to ask her, I want to put that immediately because this guy is losing. Everybody moving there, they got to move out, and he's very upset. I told him about it, like everything. Yes, I think the resident is two twenty-two. See the, see the document.
Just may, I'll work on that tomorrow.
All right. Thank you.
Counselwoman.
Attorney Graham, in situations like that, you primarily need just the person's name and address for that to be sent out?
And I can find the tax parcel number off the county website.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Counselwoman Thompson?
Hey, Mr. Mosley. Do you have any contracts that are being held that needs to be done but that are being held for various and certain reasons?
Held by?
Thank you. By the back of office because, well, various and certain reasons.
Did I think of? Typically, the fair contract that's requested is sent to the mayor's office or picture or review.
And that was the essence of the contracts we were presenting today. Those were sent to the mayor's office for approval. For one reason or another, he decided not to sign those, and those moved forward to Cory or President Williams. For him to sign so we can move forward with contracting those bodies to accomplish our goals.
Yeah, that's right.
And that was a pretty quick turnaround. I appreciate that. Thank you for paring this for us.
Counselwoman.
Can you just hand me my contract that I submitted? Attorney Graham, the invoice was five fifty. This got one thousand five hundred and fifty, so I could correct this.
I could correct it. It's wrong. I thought, is the invoice attached to the contract as we did?
Oh, yeah, it is.
I can see what you thought of those one thousand. That's part of the dollar sign. That's part of it. It's five fifty.
That's great credibility right there for that.
If we did it done tomorrow, we just go, email it out. Counselwoman.
With my contract, I know we discussed, Attorney Jones and I discussed the business license as well as the insurance, and they do not have insurance. And Attorney Jones said we would have to make a motion that they would need the liability insurance. It's right in the grant. And so they're not cutting down a tree or, you know, mowing the lawn. And so he said that he didn't see what they needed to have the liability insurance on this one, but we would have to make a motion to go ahead and pass that. That mine's been held up long, long, long. But we passed this way back in October.
I just think of the paper collect, you know?
Right, I just think of the paper collect.
All right, is that, is that for the, Greg Wright?
Yes. The asthma contracts, we've already allocated the funds, but we needed a contract sign. We've allocated the funds and put them in the budget, and actually, they're working on a FEMA grant for us right now for firefighters to see if we can get that ladder truck and some others that they need in fire department. I've gotten in touch with Chief Gray because of last weekend, so that's due at the end of the year. And they're working hard to get that done. They've been working with our country just to help us out because they know that a part of our agenda maintenance, we have already allocated those funds.
That's my understanding. I suppose the council can move this next meeting just away from the insurance department.
We're going to put it up this time.
If you do that, I don't want to do it knowing that Attorney told me I need to make that, make the council aware of that. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Any other questions for Attorney Graham? Counselwoman Thompson.
Something happened today, and I just want to make sure this is, it's in my ward. But it is where, there was some work done in my ward, and something happened to someone. Car fell in there. And I was called, so I had to go around there. The work was done through the, Mr. Ray Hall, the engineer. And we were waiting for them, you know, like the asphalt to put in there. Was waiting for them to come back. When it rains, it goes away and it makes the hole real, real big. And I've been pushing for that. The person asked me this, that I told him I couldn't say that. I just, I just, I told him I didn't know. With that car damage, you know, people get their car damaged and then when they put through their file here at the clerk's office, and then our insurance is turning a lot of people down. But then the person told me, said, well, Counselwoman Thompson, this is your ward, and you know that this is the problem. I said, but you got to understand that I have been pushing for this to get that repaired. It's been on a, we have, we do our contract lease. And the person told me that he was gonna, he was so upset, but that's why I wanted to say this in front of him. I know this, I knew it was there, and I had been pushing issues for a long time for the contractor, subcontractor to come in and pay it. Because once they put the asphalt in, every time it rains, the hole spreads big. And when it's nights, there's nothing there. Like the LED lights does not help our community over there. It'd be dark. And this person just, he came, his car went in the hole, and I think he did something to his accident. He was fussing. And I was trying to explain to him that we do what we could, we put in for it. So if he tries to hold, he can't hold me in liability for that, could he? Because I, even though if I did, I told him, we've been working on it. So he's very upset, and I wanted to know. He can't hold the council person in that ward when we already had documentation saying that the work order had been put in to be with.
Person, love? Any other questions for Attorney Graham? Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening. We'll get you, do some ordinance drafted for tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Now to the... General. Oh, man, to the business, sir. Size twenty-six, okay. Business item number one. Just writing out my, I'm sorry. Business item number one, you know, Counselwoman Jackson, also Counselwoman Benjamin, been talking about our land that we have, property that we have to sell. Hopefully, if we can, I know Counselwoman Thompson, you've been mentioning also about a, looking at Birmingham. I know Birmingham, they have what you call a Birmingham land bank, Atlanta. And basically what they do with the surplus property that they have here within the city to sell, they either, they sell it at a market value or they use it for economic development. And I know it would fall upon our eleven fifty, eleven fifty-three B one. That's our code, I think it is.
Eleven one?
Fifty-three B one, fifty-three or fifty-one, B one, code where, where, where it relates to land within the city itself. I had a meeting on last week. I'm not going to say the, the company name. But this particular company was interested in purchasing about three or four houses that the city had owned for redevelopment and fixing it up and renting it out. And also maybe for future reference, you know, home ownership. And this particular company, I mean, I'm going to say it's some house authorities. They were like to, I know it's four different addresses that we talked about. If the city would be willing to go ahead and give them that property, either purchase it and go in and, you know, redevelop the property. And also it helps with the quality of life, not only with the quality of life, also with the, the safety within the area, the lighting area. And hopefully, if we can work with some of this R A along with the stuff in the seven land bank to get rid of some of this property that we have on the book. And not only with that, some of this property that we can auction off and sell, that can be a revenue stream within the city. Because I know for the last three or four years, I think Counselwoman Benjamin did get a list of properties from Mr. Thompson. And that's a lot. And we can shift some of this stuff off our hands for the revenue stream, far as with the lien process. I know you asked about the lien process, and I know it's been three years or longer, so if we can go ahead and move forward, we'll set up some of that property and move it forward with our new revenue stream for the city. Counselwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that's a wonderful idea. I would like to, to look at where they're, they're checking on, make sure that if they wanted to buy in an opportunity zone, a nonprofit doesn't need to buy in an opportunity zone because, for those purposes, because it stops, it includes a developer who's really going to come and develop something of full profit, coming and buying and turning out, you know, making investments, profitable investments. Normally, I mean, there are exceptions, but I just wanted to, to say those are things that need to be taken into consideration. But the S R A board is, they have an, they have an O Z committee that I'm sure is well versed on that. So, but also in that thing, after everybody has their questions and discussions, if I have an issue related to that, that's what I'd like to bring up.
Counselwoman.
If you, if you recall, maybe two years ago, the attorney had identified land and houses that the city owned. And the county council had already voted to liquidate those properties that we can. If you recall, the list in share pink and blue.
Yes.
The, I think that either the pink we could sell, the blue we couldn't. So I think we need to register that document and let the house. So I think we need to register that document and let the homeowners go over it and see what property they would be interested in. And let's get, and let's go ahead and get it done.
Another, Councilperson. Councilwoman Youngblood.
And this is semi-related. And the newly added opportunity zone, part of the west side of the area. There are some, some places that really need, they needed attention for many years. And there are people who have apartments. And as, as everybody on the council knows, land, property owners, landlords who have multifamily apartments are supposed to provide garbage receptacles for those apartments. And there are landowners, a couple in particular, who do not. And that is a bone, I know Councilwoman Jackson's a thorn in her side. Because there is an area that that affects very, very badly. And there is an area where, in the arts and entertainment district, that people have worked very hard, the whole city. It's been a public, private, building property relationship and project that has a lot of time, money, and effort has gone into. And then you have some absentee landlords and some people that just hang onto that property, end up doing one single thing. They do nothing right. And so I want to start, I want to do a project and I want to start block by block and start implementing, invoking the Municipal Improvement Act and, and making those people do what they're supposed to do with their property. It's just like we did with the O Y M C A across the street. And so, you know, if you, if you're going, and we had to do that to, to at least save the facade. Looks like we may have to do that again. I don't know. But, but anyway, I want to, because I own a arsenal place and I'm down. There is just too much potential. And you have some people who are taking care of their homes. And then you have people that have nice homes that are structurally sound, but you've got pure trees growing up through them. And anyway, that's what I want to just, I'm just giving notice that I'm going to be coming with an, with the resolution that we're going to be doing that, which it doesn't require that. But I think that we need to do that and we need to give notice by newspaper. And then we will give them adequate notice by publication. We will give them adequate notice by letter. We're going to do everything legally and above board. But we'll do it, we'll do it, we'll do it more than legally. We're going to give them more than adequate notice. We're going to be more than fair because if it's tested by, and people come up here, they're not going to have a leg to stand on. They're going to, they're going to, you know, they can come up here and meh, 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 meh till the cows come home or Jesus comes or whatever. But we are going to have done what we needed to do. Because I mean that as long as I have the ability, we're going to be doing the best we can for sale despite, despite our circumstances. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay.
Next, this is item number two. I asked Ms. Wade if she would be so kind. I know we, we've been talking back and forth about raises. And I know it's, we have less employees this year. And I asked her how much it would cost for the one-time raise pending that we also working on a permanent raise of three to five percent. And I asked her what would that amount be? She said roughly, it'll be roughly about a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars for the employees that we have here now. That's also including AmeriCorps would also be part of that, that one-time raise. And in the past, I think it, it's been, they've, they've been included in the past. It's two hundred dollars.
You mean tell me we've been giving them, the AmeriCorps beginning to raise since we've been sitting up here? In the last two years?
The one-time raise.
The one-time raise?
They've been included many years.
Because they are part-time.
They're part, they're part-time.
Okay.
City employees.
I never, I, I was, sorry.
Wait a minute. When you say they got raised one time, what, how much money did they get?
Two hundred dollars.
They got two hundred dollars when we gave the other employees?
Yes.
Okay, so. It grant money? When they grant money? Don't they have grant money?
Yeah, but they will get reimbursed back on the salaries. They do get reimbursed. Like when the money is drawn down, whatever salaries is charged to them, they do get that money back. But I, I recall once that they weren't included and then you all went back and voted to include them. If I remember seriously correctly. I may not be doing this administration. But it did happen.
Okay. Councilwoman Jackson.
Okay, two things. I don't remember getting my incentive paid when I was with AmeriCorps. Can somebody make a check for me? And secondly, that's a grant. And so if we've allocated a certain amount of money in the grant, so to say we, over the life of the grant, we've allocated a hundred thousand dollars. And we didn't put in the budget that we were giving one-time raises each year, then are they going to pay that back? Are they going to reimburse us for something that we didn't initially allocate?
I guess I know lots of discussion that, you know.
I mean, if we're, if we're, if these are one-time raises and grants, if it's not in the budget, they're not going to take care of it. Now, if it's in the budget that we've decided when we get the grant that we're going to treat them like this and we're going to do this, that's one thing. But if it's not in the budget, they're not going to reimburse us.
Which one?
The total is three thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars.
For AmeriCorps? Is it in the budget, in the grant budget?
Well, I don't know exactly what their salaries were for the grant because it's not in the general fund. Only thing we cover is their match, the match that we're supposed to.
Are they current on matches? I mean, before, they were behind on matches.
Well, I, I have said, conservative, that we are not currently receiving our, our money, our funds that so dis. It's nothing changed.
So we're still in the same situation where we're going to reimburse for the money.
You know, I love the AmeriCorps program. I love AmeriCorps. We all do. But the AmeriCorps people are not the city of Selma employees. And they should not be getting the one-time bonus. And I have long, I have always, ever since we first did that, I have always said, they should do it when you're employed by the state of Alabama and you're assured, help me out with this. And Cora, you, or did you know this to your state employee? My, oh, Councilwoman Jackson. They, they don't give the same amount across the board. It is based on your years of service. And that is fair. You get X number of dollars for each year that you have served. And that's fair. Now, if I had worked in a place thirty years and I got the same thing as somebody that did it worked there five years, how do you think I would feel? Now, if I was a five-year employee, I'd be happy, happy, happy.
Well, how about excluding the happy, how, how, how do you feel about the one-time raise and one twenty-seven for the employees? How about Council, Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman.
I have, I'm, I'm hearing you. I, I have a problem with this. The reason why I have a problem with this, when, ever since I've been sitting here, all I hear is one-time raise and incentive for the employees. For the past four, this is coming into the fourth year, that you have these workers, which we all know, the mayor made his statement, they will be, they're taking an application already. And he said by January the first, that these people will be working. And we'll, we'll send ourselves up here saying, give these, we know how many people are employed right now. We already know. How many people that out there at public work? We know how many there are. And we're sitting here talking about maybe twelve, maybe what, thirty or forty people getting a one-time incentive to raise. But that's not helping them. President Wood, that's not helping. I, I, no, no, President, let me, let me ask him, can we finish the reason why I say this? Because here we are, we're going to go back to the draw vote again. We get, he's getting ready to hire these people, okay? He's getting ready to, he said, he said, he said all the job positions, that he, they are taking application right now. People are coming in, they're filling in the application. And he said that January the first, that these people will start to work. Now, if we, we're in, finna make a decision on our, on our budget. And if we agree, what you're saying is good. But we have not looked at the alternative, what he's, his move that he's finna do.
Okay, first of all, let me, I know, I'm sure. If you really want to get into some labor issues, number one, whenever you laid the six-day employees out, you had to write and tell, tell them or read somebody who was terminated, number one. I don't think they received the letter. If they were terminated for funding, if the funding is available now, that's, that's going to be the first one to call back. So if the ones that was laid off, if they're not the first one to get the opportunity to come back to be gainfully employed, we sending ourselves up for a vicarious lawsuit.
Even though if he does what he's doing now, putting the application, bringing them back as new employee, he's, he's bringing them back as a, putting them, rehiring like it's new employee. We still sitting up for a fair, we sitting ourselves up for a lawsuit.
Remember, we just allocated the funds. We can hire, we can't fire.
Okay.
That's all we can do.
I just didn't want us to be, I understand you doing this.
I would thought, I would thought most.
No, you.
All right, Councilman, Councilman.
I, I, I understand your desire, Mr. President, I really do. But, you know, in reality, Council Lady, I mean, Thomas do have a legitimate point of concern. I would hope and pray that we would forego any incentive pay or any one-time pay raise until we want to have a budget and we know what we're working with. So I think it would be wise for us to just table this.
Okay.
This incentive pay and one-time raise until we have fashionable budget and we do it.
All right.
All right, I thought, but, all right. Any other buildings update? Councilwoman Thomas.
Okay, I'd like to tell everyone, all of us, we, we did the contract for, for the land escaping in our city, trying to beautify, clean it up, get the dead weeds. And he was started, I think after Tuesday, they would come in and they asked me to, I hate that people feel that we can't work together in our city. Mr. Byrne, some kind of way, somebody, somebody did something to Mr. Byrne. And Mr. Byrne, I talked back to him because he agreed to do our job. And he told me, he said, Councilwoman Thomas, he said, I don't want, I want to deal with one someone. He said, not fifteen people. So if someone was trying to, I'd say maybe say sabotage, trying to discourage him moving forward, cleaning up our city. And we had a long talk and he said that he will, he will have, he will start immediately when we turn the con, when President Wood signed the contract. And the people will come in and I will be like following the areas that they're doing to make sure that this is what we require for our city to be done. And I just want people, you know, we all work together here as a team. And like I told Mr. Byrne, we want our city back. We want to make our city clean. When people come into the welcome center, we want to be able, it don't have dead bushes and stuff. So they're going to do this. They're going to come in. After Tuesday night, Wednesday, they'll come in and they'll start, immediately start to work. And everybody see the map where they're going to work at, the areas they're going to work on. Everybody see the map? Did you get a map?
It's part of the contract.
You didn't give us a copy of her contract. You just gave us our.
Oh, I, I, I give y'all one.
Two people copy of the contract.
Just the landscape so they can see. This. This, yep. And they need to see this. They need to see this right here, what all he's going to do.
No, we're going on tomorrow. Tomorrow.
You know, we put this to the floor, hold on.
I remember. That's why I was asking. I thought we had already voted.
We already voted on it.
You voted allocate the money.
Allocate, allocate the money.
And we're going to confirm the contract.
Yes, and y'all need to be see where, where he got, that part of the city showing the work that where he's going to be doing and telling you the four intersection that where he's going to come in, you coming in to Selma. We have four intersection, President Wood was saying we needed to do something to, to beautify in the downtown area.
Who are the four intersections?
Yeah, it's four. It's four.
Okay, let's get it, Councilwoman. Charles, I thought it was.
All right, and also I want to give an update on, on the, about our lights. I know a lot of citizens been, you know, everybody's been getting their feedback about the traffic lights. We have worked so hard trying to, we can't get, we've been trying to get a map. He asked for a map of the city of our traffic lights, you know, where all the lights at, located at. We've been, Ms., Ms. Wade tried to help me to get a map too. But it is hard for us to get the map. So I would, I wanted to ask him if he could come down and I knew, I know where they all at. I went all over and I wanted to know, could he, you know, go into these areas and see what he had to place the boxes at? Because we need those, these lights are going our bed in different parts and cause an accident too. So we need to, we need to work on that, that definitely what the city of Selma need these lights for.
Councilman, we want to get a council.
Yeah, quick, quick question, Councilwoman Thomas. So the map is looking for is just where all the traffic lights in the city are located?
Mm-hmm, that's the map. We, me and Ms. Wade had called. The place we called, Ms. Wade tried to get.
It's not Montgomery.
Yeah, it's some, it's, it's a place where, in Montgomery, where you could be able to get a map showing the city you in where all the traffic lights at.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we couldn't get it.
And Heritage was doing it in Birmingham as well.
Yeah, but I think it would be best if we, he could come and, you know, by me being retired, I could, you know, take him, show him where all of them at, all out, where the boxes at. Because most of the boxes are in the resident area.
Right, right.
They're not on the interstate because, you know, the state take care of all that. But it's only like where we live at, in the areas we live at in traffic.
And anything else?
Well, the only thing left is the, the contract with.
We'll put that on the set along with Councilwoman Jackson and our word that, that was.
Okay, the last one?
Yes, ma'am.
With the, the contract with Judge Armstrong, with the Dallas Academy. You, aren't you supposed to be sent up before we move forward? Okay, okay.
I try.
Okay.
I think, I think it was confirmed that it'll be Monday.
Oh, it'll be Monday?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Councilwoman Jackson?
Um, hello, with, uh, with Councilwoman Thomas has said, um, you know, the guests have gifted us the, um, lights, eighteen historic lights. Um, I have spoken with the gentleman that, uh, had to go away to Ohio. And I got someone out of Wisconsin, that's helping, also he's out of Wisconsin. Um, that's been helping me, and we found someone in Ohio. Uh, I call the companies Temple Electric and places like that, they gave me astronomical amounts, three thousand dollars a light to refurbish them. Um, and so, that was something we couldn't do. And so we found someone out of Ohio that's, um, that are willing, um, three thousand dollars per light one like this. Um, and so, they're, they're, I asked them, they're refurbishing them for seven hundred. And so I asked them to go ahead and they said they would, if we purchased the LED lights, um, to go inside, they would install them for free, of course. Um, but I asked them to go ahead and get a quote on the LED included, and we, we do want, um, one, um, you know, thing, they're coming down there and installing, of course. So, um, I'm just trying to do one-stop shopping, but we do have those eighteen lights that, um, can go up in our neighborhoods or, or, as you know, we have some that are actually falling apart, that we've lost parts, that have hit our trucks and things of that sort. So we're in the process, she's working on getting the boxes set up, and I'm working on getting the eighteen new lights, um, replaced. So we're just trying to take teaming together. And finally, last week, um, I got a quote from them where they did include, go ahead and put the new LED lights in there so they can be ready to go when they come down and install them. But he said if we purchase them, he would install them for free, so I just asked him to keep that in the price.
Thank you for your collective effort. Councilwoman Thomas?
Okay, and, uh, wow, this is, this is part of our city too. Uh, President Bo, as we, as everybody look at the contract on the back of the, uh, the landscape, turn to the picture, uh, of what the work, the areas in the city, you'll see where he took the, the mark of. Well, I want everybody to be satisfied, I want all of us to be on the same page. Um, with, Ms., Ms., do you have woman's way? Let me, yeah, I gotta get you. Um, I want you to look at, uh, the areas where he has marked off on the areas that they didn't, down on the areas that he's gonna be doing in that area. So look at, can you see, understand this, uh, bow line?
What?
Can you understand?
Can I understand on that?
No. Can I, can you understand?
I mean, I've been telling for three years, but I'm still not that know.
That's what I was saying.
I'm allergic to having things in my ears, but.
I'm just saying, I'm saying, now you know the location, are you pleased with the areas?
Yes, ma'am, that's.
Ms. Youngblood?
Yes, I am.
Mr. LaShaw?
Oh, yeah.
What about you, Mr., Mr. Bo?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm more than pleased, um, thank you, this.
Cause I just wanna, when he go in, I, I, I want everybody to, I don't want nobody fussing and this, I ain't thought we was gonna do this, he told me. So I'm gonna be, when he goes out, I will be with them, looking to make sure that the areas that he says he's gonna do, and make sure that we get, they tend to get.
Councilwoman?
Councilwoman Jackson?
Do you, do you mind if I ask you, and I paid out of, um, our discretion there, but Water Avenue at Washington, right in front of us in St. James, where we were lining up Saturday, has huge weeds in front of, I just noticed it Saturday. And, um, so, uh, if, can we get a separate one, I paid for it, if, I don't, I don't see it included in this one, you got the downtown area.
It's downtown.
Right, but if you can get that one little, I mean, uh, I noticed it on Saturday, and I know when we were talking earlier, we were looking at the ones that coming right off the bridge, but if you, if you just make a quick.
I asked him, he probably do it for us, for good faith.
Okay.
And also I wanted to let you know too, uh, for a citizen, I see all the leaves, uh, around here, around our building and, 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 and that, um, and on the back, back there, those leaves are danger, those, they're slippery. Cause I got thrown down the other day from the county. So I'm gonna go on to ask, uh, Mr. Fitz, he's gonna volunteer and, uh, we're gonna get the blow, blow around the buildings, all out the walkway, and we're gonna bag those, uh, leaves up, we gonna get out there and do that ourselves. And we'll try to get some of the school kids with me with some rake, so we can clean up around our city.
All right, thank you.
All right.
On the, uh, just as an aside, for those who care, I mean, I mean, any of you do, the welcome signs that come in, the four different welcome signs we have in the city of Selma, if you notice underneath each one of the signs, there's a dead spot.
Yep.
That dead spot was designed for the city to put up either another sign, that can put the dates on there for continuing events, or be used for banner placement for anybody who's having an event in the city. So let's say we're having Parks and Rec sign up. Well, those are designs, we can put banners on those signs, and when you come into town, you can see we have a Parks and Rec sign up. So it's something we don't use at all, uh, but obviously if council has concerns or has events coming up, or if others in the community have events coming up, the idea was to center that location and make that be the place you can find what's coming to the city of Selma, whether it's quarterly, monthly, uh, depends on the cost associated doing that. So if you ever wondered why there's a dead spot underneath all the welcome center signs, all the welcome signs, that's the reason. Cause we can put signs up, let everybody know the good events happening in our fair community. Councilwoman. Try to share the right.
Oh, I just can't remember, she started talking about signs, what I couldn't remember about my. Um, every time we come over the bridge, back over the bridge in the Selma Bayway says, those stinky signs were all over there. We have got to start enforcing, and with it being, and, and with it being election season coming up, we really have to, because it looks awful. And we are about to, to start, um, you know, we really are, are becoming serious about cleaning up the town. And thank you, thank you, thank you, Janet Thomas, for all your hard work.
It's for all of us.
I know it's for all of us. But, but listen, it makes me ashamed of myself, I oughta be working for this hard as she do. But anyway, um, I, but anyhow.
I hear people, the reason, can I say this? I, 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 I hear people talking, uh, tourists when they come through. And when they stop, I be so embarrassed when they stop and they read them, those little signs out there. They stop and they be reading and they see, somebody throw household garbage in the bushes and, and.
I know, I know, but listen, talk to me at the end of your third term. But anyhow, I'm down, I'm just a bit like that, but anyway, um, you know, the wind, the winds had my say. But anyway, yeah, I, I'm so, you are wonderful, I'm so proud of you, you're my hero. But anyhow, we've got to do something, chief, you know, the statute now, instead, our, our municipal code says the police and the city council and code enforcement are the people that can pull up the signs. Nobody else can, except the person who owns the sign. And so, um, we got to, can, can, can you talk to the, to the people about pulling up the illegal signs there? Now, there's a lady, that lady that son was killed, I feel very sorry for her about that, but I, I don't know how to exactly handle that, but we need to talk to her and say, let's find something, some appropriate way, maybe we can get them to run a holiday article in the newspaper and say, you know, we're going to have to at Christmas time, we've got to get up the signs. Because what that, see what's happening, advise other people to put their things down there, we just cannot do it. We cannot do it, we've got to start pulling up those signs. Um, cause this is not a weaky sign city. Don't we have three, uh, uh, uh?
There's three guys we supposed to get from the, the fire department?
Where am I going, so we could just sign you, but anyway, I just have to tell that.
I couldn't agree more, and in fact, uh, I have a rule, if I, if I catch a sign in my ward, I'll call you, let you know if you don't get it. If you don't come get it within twenty-four hours, I can throw my truck and bring it down here. But, uh, the only signs I have in Ward One are the direct TV signs, that I'm gonna put those little poles. Or if somebody wants to drive the truck, I'll get in the back of that truck and pull every one of those signs out, cause they drive, drive me crazy. It's gonna drive down through town, so.
Listen, from hair breaks to beauty parcs.
Well, it's, it's the, yeah, they're all the poles, which can't advertise them. And anything on the city right of way, if it's, you know, I try to give them a chance to come get the sign, cause it's, it does cost them money, but if they fail to arrive.
Well, they can be signs.
Right, I let them know that as well, and I yank every one of them up as I can, and I would encourage every other counselor to do the same thing. Obviously, you know, church, educational type thing, uh, and, you know, houses for sale, as long as it's not on the right of way, it's that. But anything else, advertisement wise, I yank and, and would encourage everybody else to do the same thing, cause it does make a big difference in how attractive, and how many other people come on board, cause they think they have the right to do it, so. I agree with you, Councilwoman, you have to pull them out or invite some more garbage, IKA, signs.
So just invite some more.
Especially with political season coming, so.
Right.
All right, thank you. Last two items of the night, Councilwoman Jackson?
Did I go into second? Oh, no, I guess, all right. That's it, so I'm finished with the Asma contract, accounts payable. I just want to make you all aware that I'm going to send your email, um, from Homewood. They sent me a copy of their, of their agenda, along with their resolution for accounts payable. Um, we've been talking about it for a while, accounts payable is, we get an opportunity to look over every check. Um, we may wanna develop, I, I, if you recall, I told you I, um, hold off and, and do it at the same time that we approve our budget and it start effective January the first, I think this is something that we need to be looking at, we need to be looking at what's being spent, we need to be voting, voting on it, um, it should be a part of records, a part of minutes, every other municipality, and any county government does it, um, and, um, that's what they tell us to do in the county courts.
Councilwoman.
And the league of, league of municipalities as well, and so, um, this is the same thing I've been talking about for a number of months, I'm just calling for a vote tomorrow, um, voted up and down.
So can, what you calling, well, vote on?
Accounts payable.
Accounts payable.
Right.
Be, uh, be payable, let it be.
Right, anything that we pay outside of payable.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
On this Asma contract, who, who do this contract?
Asma?
Who?
Are you saying the Asma contract?
No, this, the, yeah.
The Asma contract?
Yeah, who do that contract?
Uh, Graham, Attorney Graham.
Okay, I would try to prove it up.
Yeah.
That's all we need to know. Cause, uh.
Someone personally draw.
Well, I, I know, I, I had some concerns with that contract, really. Because in one section it says the, um, parties can dissolve the contract by mutual agreement. And it, it would've been fine with me, had they accepted that, then they go up to another section, give an option for suing.
Well.
And, 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 and that don't fare well with.
We need to talk about.
They really don't. I think it's simply should be, if, if you don't like the services, you know, just part ways.
I agree.
Yeah, we need to, we need to, we need that, we need to.
I think we need to, I think we need to revise that contract, really, because I don't wanna give nobody no option to sue us, I'm tired of lawsuits.
Make that the truth, Councilwoman LaShaw, correct?
I thought that was my last name. Councilwoman, it's close to here?
Uh, President Bo, as far as, uh, we are making, for, you know, don't, don't we supposed to have the, explaining? Aren't we supposed to give them what we, uh, decision on about the, in the budget by the tenth? Okay, then let me ask you this question. Can you tell us, with our attorney representing this council, with the things that we turned in, where are we at with him, Bobby Seigam? Where are we at with, uh, we use one, the person I paying the money back? What are, what is Bobby Seigam saying with all of this, people have gotten paid, uh, with the funding positions and, and other things? Where, where are we?
I asked him to email me an update, uh, the questions that you're asking about. I know one of, he's emailed me about the, uh, the recreation, the resolution.
Yes.
Uh, he just informed me that he did email me a reply to that.
Oh, are you, are you referring to my, the resolution that we talked about, the recreation department? But, uh, we did a vote only.
Yeah, but I can say, I, he did inform me, he emailed me his reply, uh, so.
What was this?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know yet?
No, he just sent it, he just sent it.
Because I, um, I understand, under the legislature, we did, we voted, keep document in the minutes, and you know, under the section code eleven forty-five five, uh, the contract had been. It wasn't a resolution done, because, uh, the Dallas Recreation, they ended the contract. When they came to the agreement with their letter, the date and the time, that they wanted the six on this contract. So, um, we didn't have to do.
I don't know which way he went, I can say he just said, chicken, my email.
Oh. Okay, cause I was, I was reading on, on my, uh, my notes about under that section code, and when it's, uh, when the mayor, what I read was trying to say, he wanted to do a veto, which he couldn't do a veto on a vote, when we already had voted, and never, a resolution was never put forth before we did this vote, because you, we received a letter, I seen the letter, uh, I don't know if any of the council have read the letter, uh, coming from the Dallas County Recreation. They, they wrote the letter saying that they wanted to end the contract. So by right, uh, they ended the contract, and they're saying that we didn't have to pay, continue to pay someone, that they decided to end the contract.
He's gonna review the resolution, Mr. President, determine what course of action was displayed in that regarding the payments and the end of the contract, and how payments revert back to the original wage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'll write a note, I was, uh, I was down to sit home today, and I had the pleasure of meeting the company that's doing our fixed a- assets. And, um, Ms. Wade.
Oh, dear.
And Ms. Wade informed me, they started, when, Ms. Wade, could you use us?
Uh, Wednesday of last week.
Oh, they already started?
And they, they were, they started at city hall, I'm not sure where they.
I, I, I mean, I don't, I just. No, really, it was two, it was two gentlemen, and, and I, I welcomed them and I told them that we're looking at accountability of all our, from everything, paying the customers, we want to count. But I do wanna thank Ms. Wade for her perseverance and, um, pushing this, and especially if I put it on the floor, because I, I felt it was necessary for the city to know and have a firm understanding of its assets. Wouldn't have that without inventory control, and that has got started now, and I do feel that long, what it's gonna do as well.
Well, thank you, uh, this Councilman LaShaw, or champion of the cause.
Yes, sir.
I know it's part of the audit, and I guess we've been missing it for so many years, but again, thank you. Councilwoman Jackson, and Councilwoman.
I'll go back to the Asma's contract, um, I knew, I didn't understand what Councilwoman LaShaw was talking about, I'd have read it a couple times, cause I had it for a couple of months. I know, I didn't, indemnification, they're saying that we won't sue them. Not that, so we're, we're the client.
No, it's.
They're providing that us a service, that we are holding them harmless, if you look at it right there.
No, I, I, I mean, what you sent me.
Only, this is same as the contract, but it's just given to, cause we went back seven times, Graham, Attorney Graham, it's supposed to.
This is, uh, term, the terminating party, which could be other than them, may pursue all remedies available at law.
Which, which party you're talking about?
I'm talking about.
The seven five, I'm looking at indemnification, I'm looking at termination.
I'm looking at termination.
Okay, A, B?
Uh, B.
Okay, termination for breach by Asma? Termination for breach by Asma, okay, disagreement may be, okay.
By either party.
Right.
It just don't say, it says Asma, but it talking about us as well.
I got you.
So, I don't wanna give no option to nobody to sue us.
It says terminate, it says either party can end the contract. So here, termination for breach by Asma, disagreement may be terminated by either party, parentheses, the terminating party prior to its expiration. If the other party, parentheses, the breaching party breaches any provision of disagreement, in that case, the terminating party may pursue all remedies available at law in equity and may seek and obtain injunctive relief against the breach or threatened breach of the breaching's obligation under disagreement.
That's a lawsuit, any way you look at it, it's a lawsuit.
The, uh, attorney's then.
Well, I think, I think.
Well, we can ask that they turn it out, but we're gonna miss out on a million dollar grant, um, and they reviewed it for three months.
Oh, we're gonna miss out on that.
Our, our mayor would sign it.
Then, if you, we're just getting it, and we're the council, you know, I think the council need to make a, a strong, uh, uh, justifiable decision about what we doing.
Right, and if our attorney's.
We just got this.
Right, right, you, but, but, let's recall that I sent it to you once it was approved from the council. I didn't bring it to you tomorrow night and make you sign it immediately, I sent it to you prior to coming to the. I sent it to you prior to coming to the office and saying, hey, please read, if we choose not to sign it tomorrow, because first of all, our rules say it should go on first read. So, I wasn't asking for anything tomorrow, I was asking that it go on first read. And so, it can be voted on on the seventeenth, because don't we have another council meeting on the seventeenth? Okay, and so, uh, then at first read, you'll be able to determine what you don't like.
Yes.
Then the attorneys will be able to go back and decide. But what I've received, what you received here tonight is signed by Asma. They've already agreed and their attorneys have already said this is a sufficient contract. Now, if you're, you're not an attorney, but if you have a question about something, I don't mind taking it back. But if our attorneys have said this, I bring them to their attention.
It's on first read, then that can tell you have a week to... Everybody wants to hear, we just got this.
That's why it's on first read.
It's an identity paper. Okay, Councilwoman?
God bless.
Thomas?
I have a question, man, I lost it.
Okay, all right, all right.
I actually...
Wait, wait, tomorrow, all contracts are going to send a general, oh, I forgot about the movie permit.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna look at rate last week? Yeah, we need to look at it. From two fifty to five hundred. Yeah, cause the max hill's five hundred. Yeah, we need to raise that for...
The movie, what?
The permit, fair, fair for that. Also, they wanted to film from December to April. They want to get a flat rate, uh... A flat rate?
Flat rate?
Yeah, because they're gonna continue to film from December to April.
What is the purpose of filming?
Civil rights, civil rights and stuff like that. I still, I still gonna keep coming, asking for the permit, the two fifty, two fifty. Okay.
Yeah, let me remind you that when they filmed the movie Selma, which I was delighted, matter of fact, um, if it weren't for my good friend Kathy Thon, being the executive director of the Alabama Film Commission and having run into her at Dillard's one day over Montgomery. And her having told me, you know, they're not gonna film that movie that Oprah's been in, they're not gonna film any of it in Selma. You need to get with your folks over there and see what you can do. I hightailed it back and went right straight to George Evans and said, we got to do something about getting. So, he circled the wagons and got people to film it, um, you know, to, to film part of it and sell them. Anyway, but then I say that to say this, thrilled to death that they did come into that. But all that they did, they came in here, John Legend had a concert on the bridge and what did he get to do? Have a concert on the bridge that he has made money on, had videos on and, and he went and had a, a cake, birthday cake and had a party in Chicago. He had a replica of the bridge as a cake, didn't do anything, tell you what he did. A few weeks later, when they had the re, what they had the 20th anniversary, or first week, when the press was gonna be here, he wanted to stay in my son-in-law's house like it was an Airbnb. But he, the realtor called, called him and wanted to, he said, well, how much are they gonna pay? Well, he thought you would just want the honor of him and his entourage being there. She trashing up my swimming pool, trashing up, isn't it? Anyway...
Think he overvalues himself a little bit now.
Oh, well, I think so too. So, I mean, what, what we wound up having was our infrastructure weakened and thus, they didn't do... Of course, Oprah welched on her promise of seventy-five thousand dollars she made to Selma High. So, I mean, I say that and say this, that, that's what, if, if, that's what I'm told.
Shame on them.
She promised seventy-five thousand dollars to the Selma High and then she didn't give it to them. Now, if it's a lie, I've been told, but somebody's told you to...
Okay.
At least in the Congress, but anyway, so yes, we need to make, somebody's gonna come here and film for five...
How, how much, how much with the flat, cause I do concur, Councilwoman LaShaw, five hundred dollars, we need to raise, raise about this.
But I think it's good money.
It should, it should, to April, that's a lot.
Yeah, two fifty times five is...
That's what I said too.
Two fifty a month, or how, how long does this contract last? How long?
Well, this is just for one, um, one day after the start.
This is for one day, then we need to, we don't need to do that. We need to look at a, a fair, a reasonable price. If someone else is paying two fifty for a day.
She did pay, and I've been mad at her.
She paid ten bucks.
She didn't get upset about it herself, my wife was a bookkeeper at the time. Uh, she gave twenty-five thousand upfront and then the other fifty, I think, came from, uh, it was continued on the sale of the song sales and the studio gave twenty-five, I think.
Wow.
They made a lot of money off that.
So, anyway, she did, yes, they did, well, anyway, so...
That's a faulty cell considering how much money she made.
Okay.
I've been mad at her all over the world.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. She did ask me about would the council consider a flat rate, but for tomorrow, we just gonna vote on this for two fifty.
Then we need to consider a cut, a flat rate, because if everyone else is paying two fifty a day, and we, you know, we don't wanna overextend, but I mean, that's a thousand dollars for five months is not even consistent. We get two fifty for one day.
Fifteen?
We need, we need to go, all right, we need two fifty one day.
How much is that? Two fifty, two thirty?
In this thirty days in a month, you know, I'm not suggesting that we do that, but we need to do that for more, maybe a thousand a month.
Two hundred dollars, okay. Times how many marks?
Four.
Well, that's, yeah, five hundred dollars. If you want two fifty, minus four hundred, that's five hundred.
Right, it is two fifty a day just for...
Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I just say, we gonna do the two fifties for tomorrow, then we just decide.
She got a little high.
Let, let's eat it, I'll close it up.
I would never interrupt council, but I used to handle all the film work for someone for years. I would call the Alabama Film Office, let Cheryl Spender do it. Find out what is the going rate for twenty nineteen, heard that for people like that, this is, that's the second question.
Thank you, like Congress just let me know.
And I'd like to see that we, wherever we get these film permits, we get a, we get a, a description of what they're here to accomplish, what they're gonna, what, what their movie's about, where they're gonna shoot. I'd like to know what they're doing, why they're doing it.
Okay, also, the last thing...
Filthy side.
Okay, also, the last thing, Pickway, Mr. Mike Pickway, uh, he retired from the cemetery. You know, he cut the wood in the cemetery.
That's right, that's another thing.
Yeah, and he asked, I think you need to vote to allow him to...
To get it.
To get it, yes.
Yeah, let him have it. Let him have it.
He said he gonna, he need to vote to the council.
We do need to vote, if we need to vote, we need to...
Tomorrow, I put on the sentence.
Yeah, let him have it.
So, tomorrow, hopefully, we'll get through it a lot quicker tomorrow, what, six nineteen? I'll see you two tomorrow. Three o'clock, um, for the meeting, three, I will not be there.
No, he will be there, but nobody's told him.
He's gonna be there.
Nobody have it paid for, we, we need to, we need to...
I'm not...
Okay, all right.
Santa, Santa will be coming to Mini Sue's Cottage courtesy of some of Dallas County Historic Preservation Society and Old Town Association, Sunday from two to four, Santa's coming to town.
Thank you.